First, 2022 to order, and if you would, please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Membershippers. Here. Alunbas.
Present.
Ingles.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Philkins.
Here.
Okay, the first thing we have to do this evening is approve the agenda. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. Councilmember Alunbas.
Yes.
Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward, if you would please state your name and then write your name and address for the clerk. It would be greatly appreciated, and if you could keep your comments to three minutes or less. Linda, you guys actually have a special place on the agenda? No, you're okay.
Good evening, council. My name's Randy Lindell, and I'll be just a minute here. Okay, I'd like to address council and department heads. How about them Blackhawks, eh? Go Chicago. Okay, my first topic tonight is such a large agenda that we have. As I have talked to the city manager and the finance director, got Owen a little upset at me, but I want to talk about community-wide sidewalk plowing. It seems that certain areas of town have been getting special attention, and since February 4th, certain areas have been getting plowed four times, where citywide has only been getting plowed twice. And how the city decides which part of the grid, or what he calls it, through the city gets plowed. One area of town gets plowed four times, and then the rest get only, you know, once or twice. They say that the city doesn't have to plow the sidewalks, and I live at Shelby and Howard, and from Howard Street down to Harris, I've noticed that that gets been a lot of attention. And, you know, they said, "Well, we don't have to do it," but I'd just like to emphasize that the city can spend, you know, almost a million dollars on the farm market, over 350K on the lofts, and another four, well, let me see, almost a million dollars on infrastructure, and we can't get our sidewalks plowed for the citizens of Cadillac? That's not too much to ask. I don't really think so. And then especially during hard winters, and we've been fortunate, but when the city, street department puts on their big wig and pillows, my sidewalk's only five feet away from the street. It fills it up three, four feet. I can't even budget, can't even do anything with it. So anyways, I did take some pictures real quick. Well, I should ask approach council, but you don't need to see them if you'd like to. But even across the street is a big empty lot, and it's a school bus pickup and drop-off. And for the last 20 years, I plowed that for the school kids, because how much fun is it to walk through wet snow and get wet feet and go to school all day? And have to be in wet shoes. It's not very fun. So I've used my snow blower, and I plowed the special path for them. But when the city comes by, they just plow it all back in. So I try my best. But I appreciate what the city has been doing, and I wish we could keep it up and continue to do a complete citywide where we can have a walkable community citywide. Boy, this is gonna be a good one. How many ordinances are on the agenda? Holy smokes.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from, excuse me, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on March 7. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Councilmember Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alunbas.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries. This evening, we have a community spotlight. Marcus, would you like to?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The community spotlight this evening is the First Presbyterian Church in honor of their 150th anniversary. And I see we have some folks here. If you'd like to step forward and go to the microphone so that everyone can hear you, especially back home, that'd be great.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, it's an honor to be here tonight. I am Pastor Mike Corlocker of the First Presbyterian Church in Cadillac. And yes, this is our 150th year in ministry here in Cadillac. We were founded November 13th of 1872, when Reverend John Redpath preached a sermon on a stump at the end of Pine Street, and that sermon led to the formation of a Presbyterian society with 14 to 15 members, and by November, that was in May of 1872, and by November, our congregation was formed. To do something, we're celebrating our year. To do something special, we really wanted to reach out to the community. Over the course of the two years that COVID has kind of wreaked havoc on all of our lives, we've been able to take an opportunity to find out, you know, where, where is God calling us to serve and who is God calling us to be? And we decided we needed to be a bigger presence within our community. So we decided that we would start our celebration with 150-day campaign of Be the Eye in Kindness, and we're hoping that the whole community will want to join us. Members of the congregation are being encouraged to do acts of kindness, and as they do, they're supposed to leave little business cards that look a lot like this banner. And if you happen to be the recipient of an act of kindness and receive one of these little cards, we ask that you pass on the act of kindness along with that card. And we'd like to see how far it will spread. We're hoping the whole community will get involved. We're hoping to fill the eye with pictures of people being kind. As soon as the weather permits, we'll be hanging the banner outside our church, and hopefully you'll see the eye fill up with photos. And, you know, that's just one of many ways we're gonna celebrate, and we just invite the community to celebrate with us. So I do, I should introduce two members, two of 189 reasons the First Presbyterian Church is so awesome is because of Linda Anderson and Janine Repka and 188 others that just make the church a fantastic place to be. Anyway, that's our, that's our presentation. Thank you so much for giving us this time and opportunity to address you and share with you what we hope will be a fun 150 days.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Okay, so that takes us to the beginning of our public hearings for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. There are four public hearings on your docket for this evening. We did have some great discussion when these hearings were set for tonight a couple of weeks ago, as well as some good introductions to those ordinances at that period of time. However, I would like to take this time to have our Public Safety Director, Adam Ojepka, take the mic. It looks like he's gonna go to the podium, to provide a run-through of the proposed ordinances, one of which is with regard to amending Section 22-99 of our code, Noisy or Riotous Persons. The second is regarding amending Section 40-5 of our code regarding exhibition driving. The third is regarding amending Section 16-144 of our code for adding motor vehicle noise. And then the fourth is a new section of code that we're proposing, which would be to add Section 22-139 regarding marijuana odor mitigation. The presentation that Adam is gonna give is gonna be a run-through of the frequently asked questions. After his presentation, city council is required to have four separate public hearings to give the public an opportunity to provide comment to the city. Following the comment and following the closure of each of the four public hearings, that provides council with the opportunity to discuss, ask questions to staff and the legal, if you have any, before considering any potential motion that you might make regarding any of the proposed ordinances. So without any further ado, Adam?
Mayor, council members, thanks for the opportunity. So the noisy or riotous person is, this ordinance is just a, an additional sentence that was put in to include all, in any other illegal activity occurring inside of a residence. Currently, it's just specific to, to two. To permit any noise or riotous persons, and this would also amend to allow for any criminal activity that occurs inside the residence if you're allowing it to occur. Number three is motor vehicle noise. So this one, this is a code amendment due to a, the ordinance not being specific to motor vehicles, just specific to residences and industrial buildings. It also includes commercial motor vehicles, but it doesn't include just private cars. So that was just an amendment to the section that's already on the books. The exhibition driving, this is a new ordinance that I proposed, and the reason I propose this ordinance is we already currently have careless driving under the MCL, and we have reckless driving under the MCL, which is a certain threshold, two or more for careless, three or more for reckless infractions. This is a lesser charge offense and gives the officers a little bit more discretion to not write the careless or the reckless. It gives them the ability to write an exhibition citation for, for drivers that are rapid acceleration, squealing, peeling of tires, the fishtailing, the racing, running of engine of a motor vehicle to cause excessive or unusual noise. That would violate Section 257707 of the Motor Vehicle Code that's already been adopted and in place.
Adam, and we did add that reference point in the proposed ordinance, correct?
Yes, it's, it's in the, it's in the last packet that went out. And then the marijuana order, as with all of these ordinances, these all came to us due to complaints that we've received. The marijuana order is, is a new one for the, for the council to take into consideration. And this was, we did receive a complaint regarding the smells permeating from one business or building into another building. And it's very difficult for law enforcement to go in there and, and try and mitigate issues without having the tools, the codes on the books. So this is a, is a method that we can go there and, rather than say, "Sorry about your luck," we can try and mitigate it with, with codes, so.
I think just to add on to what our Public Safety Director has said, to really enunciate this point, you know, why are we here tonight talking about these ordinances? Well, we're here tonight talking about these, these ordinances because these are things that are somewhat lacking in our code in terms of the toolkit for our law enforcement and code enforcement folks to be able to have at their disposal. And we, we've learned that we're lacking these because of basically experience that we've had, especially over the last, you know, the last few years, where there's been an increase of, you know, of verbal complaints coming in about, you know, "Hey, you know, my windows are shaking," or, you know, "I just got, you know, covered in diesel exhaust as I was, you know, sitting at a sidewalk cafe. Isn't there anything we can do about this?" And, you know, the, the tools that we're looking at putting in place will help provide our police department with that, you know, with that effort. And those are the ordinances that we're gonna talk about tonight.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing, public comment, for the first ordinance, which is the City Code Regarding Noisy or Riotous Person. And so if you would like to speak to that ordinance, please come up.
City Council Mayor, how much time do we have per ordinance?
I was just asking.
Madam Mayor.
Is it six, Marcus?
That's what we've done in the past.
Okay, again, whole page of ordinances. A lot of these ordinances are already federal law, and they're already mandated. And the city of Cadillac, city council, city manager, and department directors must stop tweaking all these ordinances. They're federal laws, and we're changing city ordinances already in the city charter or already established. All the citizens of Cadillac require is law and order to protect our lives and protect our property. We are continuing tweaking ordinances and constantly moving, and here we are. Again, we're back out here. So again, I am against changing any of the proposed ordinances, you know, such as motorcycles and the discharge of the smoke and the muscle cars. Well, if the people don't like it, go eat inside, you know? Look, you guys want all the people to come to Cadillac? How many cars drive up and down Main Street a day? You got the exhaust, you got, you got diesel, you know? Hey, you know, go eat inside. It's always gonna be a problem. There's, you know, so we have to start, stop changing these ordinances. Thank you. They're already on the books. They're federal, city, state laws, and even on marijuana, even though it's a federal law, it's against the law. It's legal in Michigan. So if somebody's offended by the smell, hey, like Cheeks and Chauncey said, hey, up in smoke.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak here. My name's Thomas Altman. I am a local landlord investor in the city of Cadillac, and have been told many times that I'm, you know, have a pretty good reputation around here. I strive to keep my properties very, very nice, have invested a lot of money in the city, in, in specific residential rental properties. And it concerns me, you know, I, I do all of the appropriate screening and take all of the precautions that I can to mitigate the risk of having potentially bad tenants. And so far, in all the years I've been investing here and renting as a landlord, I've had very good luck, very good tenants. But it concerns me that it could affect me both financially and and my, just being known in the city of having good rentals. If I have, you know, a bad apple, get through my screening process, and, you know, I, it's not legal for me to sit there in surveillance, my tenants 24/7. I have very few rights to enter the property. I can't enter the property unannounced to them, so if I do my normal screenings and walkthroughs, I have to give them at least 24 to 48-hour notice, and they can go hide, you know, some of the illegal activity, things like that. They're gonna be on their best behavior when I enter that. But I can't be there at midnight, 2:00 AM, things like that, when some of these activities most likely happen. And then to have the opportunity to potentially be fined for their misdoing, you know, that's, that concerns me a great deal. I want to continue to invest in the city of Cadillac and, and continue my reputation here. I also invest in other states as well, and, you know, if it, if the outreach, I, I can understand the, the reason behind this law and it's not, or the ordinance, and it's not just, you know, at rental properties. But if the outreach extends to that, I can see, and I've talked to a lot of other landlords as well, that they'll just start investing elsewhere. And we're already in a, you know, big need for rental property, nice rental property, quality rental property. And I don't want to do that. I want to continue to invest here, but I don't want to be held to the potential risks of my tenants having illegal activity if I've done everything that I can to mitigate that risk. So, you know, if this ordinance does pass, I just ask that, I really hope the city force and the court system will have my back as a landlord and enforce my rights as well, because we all know tenants have more rights than landlords do. So it's, it's a very tough position to be in, to be a landlord in general, and that's just gonna make it that much harder. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Spurgeon, and I have been a landlord in Cadillac since 1983. I've written something down here because I don't want to lose my train of thought here. No matter how much we pre-screen, it doesn't guarantee a trouble-free tenant. Tenants provide the best references. Sometimes even their current landlords give them glowing reviews just to get rid of them. We can't possibly be watching them 24/7, and if the police are involved, we don't get notice of those incidents. So unless we are notified of a problem, we can't deal with it. The eviction process is time-consuming and doesn't happen overnight. It can take months before we are actually able to get them out. In the meantime, they can destroy the premises and cause all sorts of disturbances, all of which is out of our control. We are also at the mercy of the courts when it comes to eviction. When we want to evict a troublesome tenant, it can take months. Wexford County gives tenants months before they can be removed from the premises. Other counties have more streamlined eviction process. We don't want tenants causing disturbances or damage, but it really isn't our responsibility just in the same instance. It's not my mortgage holder's responsibility if I choose to have a loud party and get drunk. Thank you.
I can go next. I'm Ben Dean. So I just want to echo what Tom and Mary said. While I'm not a landlord, when I read this, I do get concerned about punishing somebody for somebody's else's doing. You know, as I already spoke to, it's a very difficult process to evict people. It can take many months, which is a financial burden likely already there. And then we're gonna hit them with another fine, maybe a reoccurring fine for something that's out of their control. And so I just, I'm really nervous about the wording of this ordinance and how it affects folks such as Mary and Tom. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to council discussion.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Can we, can we get that up on the screen first, before you start, actually? Sorry, Steve.
No worries.
It's the, I think it's the page 24 of the packet, or... One of the people in the audience to be able to read it, too.
And Mayor, members of council, I, just for verification, we, we can notify landlords from the police department if there's something that happens at their property. So if the police can, can begin that process. I know we do it with some of the multifamily developments, but we can start doing it with the single-family ones as well, so.
I wanted to let people know, I was gone the last meeting, so when I came back in from out of town, I got a lot of calls on the ordinances. And for the people that spoke tonight, I absolutely understand your concern, and I, I had the exact same concerns that you did. When I went back, and our city site's actually really good, because if you go on to ordinances, it shows you the different versions at different times as they've changed. The first thing is Section A, which is up on the screen, which "It shall be unlawful for any person to permit any noise or riotous persons to assemble in any house owned, occupied, or controlled by him." That is how the ordinance is now, and I was surprised to see that. Saying that, looking at it, as many of you know, I'm also an attorney, but I always look at things from the practical side. Let's go back and, and see what the effect of this is. Any landlord right now who in their lease requires their tenants not to violate local ordinances, state statutes, or other laws is not gonna be seen as permitting the types of activities that Public Safety Director Ojepka is trying to make sure he can protect the community against. By adding Section B, again, I do not believe it's gonna expose landlords to any liability or responsibility. If, if the police were to contact a landlord and the landlord did not have the standard language in their lease, and they sent their tenant a cease and desist, "Hey, we're put on notice that you've been doing these activities," the landlord's not gonna be seen as permitting that activity. One of the landlords that called me with their concerns about this ordinance said, "Well, you know, I've got a problem right now, because when I have had some problem tenants, I've called the police, and it's been hard to get them to be involved." Well, I think that was Mr. Ojepka's point, and by adding Section B, we now have the ability, as a landlord, if you're a landlord, to say, "I'm having these problems, and I want you to take a look at it," and the police can be involved in it. So I wanted to make sure people understood, A, I'm very sensitive to the fact of the concern of landlord responsibility. I'm a landlord. I don't think that puts the burden that people are afraid of on the landlord. And B, I'm also concerned, you know, unfortunately, many times when we're dealing with ordinances, we're reacting to the lowest section of our community where people can act like good neighbors and, and do not know where boundaries exist for proper behavior and following the law. And it does give the police the tools to be able to work hand-in-hand, actually, with landlords and, and deal with it. So I want to make sure you know your concerns have been heard. I would have and had the same concerns. Overall, I think this is a positive change. Last comment to Mr. Lindell, I agree with you. I don't want duplicative laws. However, the law is a living entity, and it needs to change with times, and it needs to adapt to our social circumstances and our community circumstances. And I think it's more important that we're open to adapt with time rather than lock in and have antiquated ordinances. But I understand your concern on that.
Great, thank you.
I have one question that was asked of me, and I didn't have an answer for. And as odd as it sounds, I'll just ask, and we can clear that up, which is the fines for people. It goes to the county in which the court operates, public library, state of Michigan, law enforcement. If we amend these, such as this, does that change the stream where the money goes? Mike?
Well, this is a, this...
Is this...
So the, the, let's talk about this one, because this one specifically says it's punishable as a municipal civil infraction. So that money stays with the city itself. So, there is a portion of that, that depending on where the case is, uh, some of that could go to the court system, but only with generally the cost and administrative fees for the court. But most of that money would stay with the city as a municipal civil infraction. And that's where it is currently.
If we amend these, then the stream, money stream stays the same as it... Okay, very good. Thank you.
What are, what's our maximum municipal civil infractions? Do we have that in there for this?
I don't know what the...
I, I believe in the code, and Mike, you correct me if I'm wrong, a first offense is a $50 fine. And there, there's, I think the second, if it's a repeat or second offense, it's $250.
Yeah, I think the max under state law is $500.
That's correct.
So, while you're doing that, can I ask, um, because, you know, and, and that's the way it's been explained to me, 'cause I, I had the same concerns, and I was talking with Steve and, and others, and, and it seems like this is making a lot more sense than it seemed initially. But I'm trying to figure out what would be the circumstance in which a landlord could be fined. Um, because, you know, all the landlords that I know of, and the folks here, and friends here, and Steve, are not people who would knowingly permit this kind of activity. Do we have this kind of problem? Or is this designed to help landlords? I, I don't understand how this is going to help. Yes, please.
And, and the Public Safety Director can correct me if I'm wrong. The type of situation I anticipate this being used in more is when we have, I'm gonna make an example. You have a father that's letting their children, uh, have full use of a home, and they're not here. So, you know, you say landlord, they're a landlord technically, 'cause they're a parent in control. And, and many times, the police have been told, either not responded to at all, or the parent says, "Not my problem, I'm not there." So I could see it being used in, in that situation. I think that's more of the problem situation. Uh, or someone that's not abandoned their home, but they've taken off. I remember we had a situation a few years ago in the city where the couple who had the home left the country for work and allowed friends to use their home, not rent it, but use it. Um, and, and there were many activities happening at that home, and if this were in place, that would give them the ability to tell those people in their homes, stop it. 'Cause I could be held responsible.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that we express an example of when this would be...
You may also, you know, with the growing trend of like nationwide rental companies running to the situation where we have an entity that's in a different state, that again is just not responding to us, so we may want the tool for that as well. We don't see a lot of that around here, but we may, so.
Right. And based on some concerns that I heard from the public, it seems to be, by making this change, that our city police department can become involved earlier than they can now, because in some instances, it was a viewpoint of a landlord that our police department just said, "Sorry, I can't help you." And in reality, they needed to be contacting the sheriff's department for that said issue. But now with this change, our city police department can get on board and support landlords earlier in a, in the process of whatever's going on. Is that correct?
That's correct. We, we currently work with landlords now, um, who will come and FOIA police reports. Um, and then we can provide them the information, why we were called to the residence, why we were called to the, to the apartment house, and let them know, hey, you know, the, here, just FOIA all of this individuals or all of this apartment number, and we can provide you those reports and show you what's happening inside of your building, so that you know how it's affecting your neighbors to, to, on both sides. So that's, that's the intent, is to, to work with them. The, the, it never was surrounding, or the idea was never specific to landlords. Um, it was property owners, which is the way it's written. So if you have a, a piece of property, and you keep going to a house for drug problems, and it's repetitive over and over and over again, um, they don't answer the door, um, but you have, you know, people running from the house, disorderly house constant, then we can pick up the phone and say, "Hey, we pulled your records, you're on tax ID here in the city, and we're having several problems at your property. You know, we need you to help mitigate that." And that's, that's the enforcement tool if we get no compliance.
Okay.
That's, again, that's the intent behind it.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion?
No, I feel...
Would someone like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the ordinance to amend Section 22-99 of the City Code regarding noisy or riotous persons.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allenbaugh?
No.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries. And so, at this time, we'll open the second public comment. Um, open the, the public comment for the ordinance to amend Section 40-25 of the City Code regarding exhibition driving. If anyone would like to comment.
My name is Gary Van Houten. I live at 1822 Shadyside Drive here in Cadillac. Uh, I just want to, uh, encourage you, I'm, I'm very pleased that you're considering this ordinance, especially tonight, um, and encourage you to adopt this one. Um, I agree with, uh, City Manager Marcus that, uh, this is a problem that has, has intensified, uh, in the last few years, uh, to the point where it, it's almost anarchy on the streets out there. Uh, so many times, you know, when I've been with others and myself, uh, and commented to myself that, where, what's happened to law enforcement, uh, in terms of the excessive noise that's occurring with these, with the vehicles today, this exhibition driving? Um, i- in my day and age, and, and I had a day and age, um, we would have been ticketed for excessive noise, uh, if we had tried any of that, the noise, driven vehicles with exhaust systems that produce that kind of, um, disruption. So I encourage you to pass this one. I'll also comment on the other one, and I have a point that I'll make on that one at that time. Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak. I am not gonna hold you guys accountable to what the newspaper reported.
Can you tell everyone?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. I'm Joe Kennard, and I live at 6700 Crosby Road here in Cadillac. Why I came this evening is, um, I am all in favor of always supporting our police department, giving them all the tools that they need. But in the newspaper, there was a comment regarding, "This is not going to apply to regular people." And in, in, um, indicated, implied that it was to focus on teenagers. I'm here to advocate for all of our teenagers. I don't ever wanna see us as a city put things into effect that target our young and most vulnerable teenagers, who are trying to figure out who they are and where they're going. We should be wrapping around our kids, not making ordinances against them. So, again, I'm not gonna hold you accountable for what the newspaper said, but that is what brought me here today. Um, I think that that would be very, very sad. Um, and I do have a comment about the last one, but I'll wait until then. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. King, the more things change, the more things stay the same. You know? So, anyways, the city proposes these code updates just keep repeating themselves. Excessive noise from motor vehicles, such as motorcycles, which will discourage riding motorcycles and mu, and muscle cars. And what about, you know, our mus...
Mr. Lindell?
Yes.
This public comment is in regards to the code, um, regarding exhibition driving. That's what we want to hear.
I was getting the muscle cars. Is that exhibition driving? 'Cause they like to spin their tires in that.
Yeah, no, that would probably be under the noise. But, go ahead.
Go ahead.
A day late and a dollar short?
Maybe.
Okay. Well, still, these code updates are not necessary. These ordinance already exist. And again, we should just leave 'em alone, keep 'em the same. And I'm gonna change this a little bit. I'm a landlord, I own a house in Cadillac and several outside. I do my best, I screen my clients, and I will not rent a house to anyone, 'cause I don't need the money. And I will not rent to people that are gonna be troublemakers. And hey, if these guys got problems, and I do my best to keep my property up, too. And hey, it's tax time, and it's a really nice, uh, tax write-offs, too, so, thank you. But we cannot keep changing ordinances. We already have 'em on the books, federal, state, and city laws. The council keeps changing and tweaking them, and it will never stop. The more things change, the more things stay the same. We need to stop it, we really do, but hey, let's see, one, two, three, four to one. Thank you.
It's okay to make a comment if we're not the city?
You have to come to the podium, please?
Oh, yes, yes. He's asking if he isn't a resident.
Oh, I couldn't hear him, I couldn't see him.
Okay.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Hi, my name is Joe Greer. I live just outside the city. But, uh, when it comes to exhibition driving, um, I think, uh, there's a difference between teenagers and mature adults. We do have, in the past, we had the back-to-the-bricks, and they cruise around the lakes. Some of those people do squealer tires, they may fishtail. However, those are like thirty, forty thousand dollar cars in those cases, and they're not willing to knock those into curbs to destroy the cars or hurt them. Um, they do put rubber on the streets, and I'm sure that is breaking the law. Uh, I don't think that's particularly what this is intended towards, but it will impact, or it could affect those, uh, people we're trying to bring into the community. As well as, uh, if there's people from outside the area that do happen to get tickets for, uh, something like this, while in our downtown, I think that looks unfavorably upon Cadillac. And I, I hope that doesn't happen, but, uh, I do feel that there are some things that children and teenagers do, especially in college, and, uh, usually they mature and they get beyond that. So I kinda think these extra rules, uh, may, uh, uh, be something that a few select individuals in town may want. But, uh, generally, some of these things don't bother others, you know, when it does happen. The reckless, careless driving, uh, endangering other people, of course, that definitely is a problem, and our law enforcement, they're able to deal with that, uh, currently. But I, I'm just concerned that if there's more rules and regulations, that it may stymie or inhibit other people that come here, and especially if there's negative consequences to those, to those drivers. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the discussion with the council.
Mayor, and members of the council, just to, um, a couple clarifications. Uh, one, the, the city is not looking at targeting any specific, uh, group, um, whether by age or any other demographic. Uh, we are not looking at restricting or eliminating muscle cars or motorcycles or other types of, uh, vehicles from our roadway system through, uh, this ordinance that's pending before you this evening. Um, simply, you know, we love, especially the back-to-the-bricks type event, the car shows. You know, those are fantastic, family-oriented activities that we, we hope to see. Unfortunately, we're not on their schedule this summer, so don't think that this has anything to do with, with them not coming here this summer. They're already not coming to Cadillac because of different stops along their back-to-the-bricks trip. Uh, but, uh, you know, what, the purpose, back to the purpose, you know, the purpose or the intent of this is so that, you know, if or when a complaint gets lodged, uh, to the police department, because somebody just witnessed something or is experiencing something, um, that is listed within the ordinance under this exhibition driving ordinance, or another, uh, business was just negatively impacted. Now there is, um, something on the books that, for whatever the reason is, wasn't on the books in Cadillac. These are things that you may commonly find on the books in other communities. Uh, this now gives our police department the tools, uh, to be able to, um, under discretion, of course, if they have to warrant, uh, a citation, can do so. And, and by the way, with, with respect to the, the citations, the civil infraction fees are $50, uh, and then a second violation is $250, uh, and then a third is $500. So...
I also wanted to just clarify that, um, when Joe Kennard, uh, you know, felt like we weren't targeting, but the newspaper was targeting, um, young people, um, I think one of the most important things that I heard from Mr. Abjekka is that, um, right now, if our police officers pull over someone for reckless driving or careless driving, if it's careless driving, they're gonna get three points on their driver's license. If it's reckless driving, they're going to get six points on their driver's license. And with this exhibition driving being added, um, basically as a warning, kind of, um, it's only two points on their license. So it allows the police officers to give, um, to send a clear message, but not financially impact, um, them as much or affect their driving record as much. And it doesn't matter if it's a teenager or if it's a 60-year-old man. Um, I just wanted to clarify that. So, was I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes. And, and to take that a step further, even with the careless driving, if you break down all of those topics that are a violation of the exhibition driving, in and of themselves are individual citations. So those could be written just with, with MCLs, but you may end up with three citations at two points apiece versus a two-point citation covered under one exhibition drive.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question. How did it get to where it's two points if it's a civil infraction? Are all civil infractions points on your license?
Yes.
We, okay.
I, I don't understand the question.
We can't, we can't really have people shouting out from the gallery. I apologize. Yeah. Yeah. So...
Mayor, if it, it helps. Again, this is another one I had a ton of calls on, so I went back to basics, and thank you, Adam, for talking to me, and Mike, also. Right now, the city of Cadillac adopts the motor vehicle code. Under the motor vehicle code, all the things that we are covering in our exhibition driving are contained in the motor vehicle code. So based on that alone, as I told Adam, I hate repeating, it's already on the books. If we've already got it, then why are we doing an ordinance? Well, then, of course, he had to throw a curveball at me. And, and the curveball was the municipal civil infraction. Because to answer your question, no, there are no points associated with the, uh, with this driving ordinance. So it's just a municipal civil infraction. There's not license sanctions, it's not abstractable. When you write under the Michigan Motor Vehicle Code, depending on the section, the section itself may have points to it, and it may also be required to be abstracted to insurance, which causes an additional expense. That kind of segues me into, uh, Joe Kennard's comment, that, you know, I, I think the problem we've seen... that, you know, I think the problem we've seen downtown is not teenagers. It's not someone with a really nice muscle car behaving inappropriately on a Saturday afternoon. It's with individuals who are driving back and forth on Mitchell Street purposely trying to disturb, whether it's people walking or peacefully being in the park. We had an incident at graduation where someone kept driving back and forth and causing a problem. It's to address those concerns and to give the police a reasonable way to deal with them without giving them consequences that are way more expensive and economically oppressive. So to kind of give you my feel on it, I was dead against it. We've got MCL. We've got the whole adoption of the motor vehicle code. The making it a civil infraction really swayed me because I think many times in our society today, there are certain consequences with actions that people don't even realize when they happen. And I think if this is enforced in our community the way it's intended to, people are going to get the message. It's not going to be a big deal, and we've obtained the desired result.
I agree.
Can I get another clarification on whether the points are attached? Did you say they weren't attached to it?
I have, and Adam and Mike, I'll look to you. Because we have this separate ordinance that's not being written under the MCL 257 codes, if it's written under this, it's just a civil infraction without points, without abstractability, because we're not falling under that umbrella.
Well, last week, or two weeks ago, when we were talking about it, Adam did say that careless driving is three points, reckless driving is six points, and exhibition driving is two points.
Oh, is exhibition driving under the state statute?
So let me clarify. I, this is what I mean. So in the municipality of Marshall, where we enforced exhibition driving, it was a two-point violation, and it was two points on your driving record.
Was that stated specifically in the ordinance?
That's what I am not sure. And maybe there was an oversight.
So you say you may have misspoke?
Well, and while Mike is looking right now, my understanding is if you write it under the specific 257 motor vehicle code section that requires it to be abstracted, then it would be. But we're not writing it under, but we're writing it under our own separate ordinance for exhibition driving.
So even the 257 codes are written to mirror whatever our code is that adopted the 257 code. Therefore, the same, so if we wrote a careless that was under state statute mirrored by code, the code section in the city would go on to the citation.
Exactly. But this is not a specific ordinance that's found under 257, correct?
Okay.
No, I'm asking.
I don't know. I don't.
That would make a big difference to me.
Okay.
Are we allowed to add clarity to the ordinance and amend it in that way or in a manner? Or do we want to?
Well, I'm not comfortable moving forward with something that we're not clear on.
I think we need an answer to that.
Yep.
Let me look at that. Give him a second. He's pulling it up.
Maybe the points can be added at subsequent, you know, like as the fine goes up, maybe after you reach the maximum fine, add the points.
If, if it doesn't apply to this ordinance, which I hope it doesn't.
Right.
The city, if they had a person that was a multiple violator, could then write specifically under the state section.
Right, right.
That would carry it. Because they have their choice of what to write. But if this automatically has two points, that point would change my view of if we have 257, let's just stick with it.
But didn't we have, I think the reason that we're, that we brought this forth is that, weren't there instances of tickets, of citations being made that did not hold up in court?
That was the-
That was the noise.
That's the noise.
Okay, all right. Not this one.
Noise referring to music, not noise-
Right, okay.
Engine noise or exhaust noise. And, you know, again, back to the, back to the purpose of why we're talking about this ordinance tonight goes back to, you know, the examples that are given within the proposed draft, where it talks about the squealing of the tires, you know, the, I think it uses the word raucous, you know, exhaust noise, fast acceleration, constant, you know, lane changing, essentially, you know, things that otherwise the police department would likely have to ratchet up the offenses to make it equal to a careless or a reckless. This gives the police department the ability of doing a much lesser charge, if they're going to charge anything. I mean, they might just simply, you know, pull somebody over and warn them, hey, you know, knock it off. You know, you're driving in a manner that's not appropriate. This ordinance, if compliance is not happening, gives them the tools to issue, you know, a much lower citation than otherwise they may, they may otherwise get. With, when I say lower, lower in terms of-
Consequences.
Yeah, consequences, you know, stigma to, you know, to your insurance and everything else. But are you getting closer? It looks like you found the subsection. There's a seventy-page document now, separate twenty-two-page document, so.
I think it's just punishable as a municipal civil infraction, but I would need more time to definitively tell you.
I would, Mike, do you see a problem if we clarify the ordinance to indicate that this would be a zero-point municipal civil infraction?
Yeah, I don't know. Like, right now, the, right now, the draft ordinance says it's a violation of this rule as a civil infraction. What it doesn't get to is whether or not there are points associated with that. Although this originated out of the Uniform Traffic Code, not the Michigan Vehicle Code. So that's why I don't know whether or not there are points abstractable under the Uniform Traffic Code versus the Michigan Vehicle Code.
We, and let me ask you this. Under the Michigan Uniform Traffic Code, 257.
Yeah.
We are not allowed to make any offense that is greater, has greater punishment than what's under the code, correct?
Correct.
Does it stop us from having an ordinance violation that is of lesser consequence?
Yeah, sometimes. And it depends on the, like, you couldn't make drunk driving a civil infraction.
Right, right. And that's specifically articulated.
Correct.
If we table this right now to check, to see if we can make sure it has the effect we want it to have, do we have to have a separate public hearing again?
No, no, you can bring it back at the next meeting after-
I think that's what we should do.
I'd go ahead and make a motion that we table this in order to, Mr. Homier, to make sure it has the intent that we do of a zero-point civil infraction.
Yeah, I support that.
Councilmembershippers?
Yes.
Almbath?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
I have one more thing before we wrap that up. Public Safety Director, is that how we intend to use the tool? Does it matter to you whether it was two points or zero points? Did you want it to be a weight to your offense? Like, what was-
I want it a lesser infraction than a careless three-point.
So whether it was the two points or the zero points or the fine, that's really not material to-
Correct, just to give the officers another tool in the toolbox. And like I said, they already have, they do have discretion. They could write, you know, the improper lane use, the speeding, the drag racing, all of those things that are listed are already covered under 257, 707. But to give them just another, another avenue to enforce without, without maybe necessate, or maybe it might not be necessarily necessary to give them a three or a six point.
Okay.
On their license.
Thank you.
We want the behavior to stop. We don't want to really mess people up for something that-
Right.
Yes.
Exactly.
So everybody, did you hear that? We want the behavior to stop.
Right now?
Okay, at this time, we'll go, we'll open the public hearing, public comment, to talk about the city code regarding motor vehicle noise.
All right. Hello, I'm Bandine again. So if I may, one correction on this. I think we actually mean Section 16145, sub-paragraph nine, 144. Paragraph nine does not exist. But still reading through this, I, my question is, it states the playing of any radio, television set, music already. So why do we need to add verbiage around vehicles? Where does it state in there that it only applies to houses and households and whatnot? So it just seems like it's just adding unnecessary verbiage, and it's already covered in today's Section 16145, sub-paragraph nine. Thank you.
Gary Van Houten again, 1822 Shady Side Drive, Cadillac. Again, I'm very interested in and encourage you to adopt or to amend the ordinance in this regard. I'm not sure, I'm not totally clear on what, how this differs, the excessive vehicle noise from exhibition driving. There's many of those vehicles that are, it's excessive noise as soon as they start the engine. And they don't need to be doing exhibition or unusual acceleration or things like that to, to be very disruptive and stressful, stress-causing. Which brings me to the point that I wanted to make about all of this. There's a direct link between excessive noise, disruptive noise, and especially unexpected noise incurring in your environment. It's, there's a direct link from that kind of stress to health issues. It caused, whether it's, these are oftentimes involuntary responses. They know that blood pressure increases when that kind of thing happens. Adrenaline responses happen. And those are not insignificant. In fact, they've shown that through the pandemic, when, when lots of these noise levels were decreased, that there was much less incidence of, of health issues that are caused by this kind of thing. That kind of surprises me, I think, again, that we need, that you need to be dealing with amending ordinances and, and, and doing, doing this kind of action to these ordinances. It would seem, it seemed to me that these kinds of things would have been in place in the first place because of my experience throughout my life is that you just couldn't go out and produce that kind of excessive noise to disrupting communities and neighborhoods. But that doesn't surprise me that you need to do this because there seems to have been recently a total lack of enforcement of these kinds of actions. So that's all. Thank you.
You know, I oppose most of the ordinances, but I do want to say to Marcus and Adam that on some of these ordinances and traffic violations and that, I was a young man once, and I did some silly things I regret today. But by giving a little leeway to a certain individual, you know, that's, you know, we don't want to mess up their lives. You know, if a teenager gets a six-point ticket, his insurance, he'll never be able to afford insurance. Hey, I guess maybe he'll go start stealing catalytic converters. But it's very important, you know. And again, I'm going to emphasize the changing and amending and tweaking of all the city ordinances. But as, if they are really going out of their way to hurt individuals or do that racing and all that, well, that's a different story. But, you know, we can all recover from our mistakes because, like T.I. said, we've all did something, you know. And even when we went to college, you know, we'd figured we could drink Bud Dry, but we couldn't do that. So. But I think it's very important that we give the, if they're good kids, Adam, let's give them a little leeway, please, and thank you. And you're talking about, oh, that's a different subject.
So I'm Joe Greer again, and I don't agree with this ordinance. I think a lot has changed in the last three decades. Three decades ago, you couldn't get a motorcycle with a radio that you could actually hear when you go down the road. If those people with those motorcycles have the radios turned up too loud, it is annoying when you park next to them, when you're downtown next to them, or even when they're going down the highway. And same is true with convertible cars. The wind noise is so loud in a convertible car, you have to have a real powerful stereo. If the person is stupid and they pull up to a light and they have it cranked up, you're going to hear it for a block or two. That these people, everybody doesn't have convertibles in town. This probably happens maybe once a month. I think we're grasping at straws here, trying to have some of these noise ordinances specifically when it comes to loud radios. I don't enjoy rap music, and I don't like it when a kid's next to me blaring his rap music in his junk truck or car, whatever it is. But I don't think at the same time, this would require a city ordinance to tell a kid to turn off his rap or junk or whatever he's listening to. So when it comes to motorcycle drivers and people with convertibles, technically, this law could discriminate against them because they may have the radio too loud when they're in town. I don't think this is right.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to discussion amongst the council.
So as I understand it, the decibel levels that we're talking about will not be like motorcycle radios or even a loud radio. What we're talking about is being inside a place and having the windows rattling. This is the type, this is the type of nuisance noise that we're dealing with. Not somebody who is cranking their rap, even to, even the, you know, though I, I want to shake the ones who have their bass so low because they love the bass so much, and I'm saying, you're killing your ears. You're not going to be able to hear that bass. But it's the stuff that is above eighty-eight, what's the decibel level?
Decibels.
It has a specific decibel level. And it's greater than a motorcycle radio, a convertible radio. It's when you add the extra woofers and the extra whatevers, and you do it to be, it's, it's, I don't know why. I always called it kind of like testosterone poisoning. But, sorry. It's, it's, it, that's the type of thing we're talking about. So I don't think this would affect a person in a car.
And to try to, you know, just again, to try to clarify, so the ordinance that we already have, or the code that we already have on the books, you know, is with respect to, you know, music and sound coming from a residential house or a dwelling unit. The code is rather old. It even refers to phonograph devices. And there is no reference at all to music or sound coming from a motor vehicle. And I, I recognize that it's confusing. The code, the pending ordinance that we just tabled, that's the one that's dealing with the noise coming from engines and exhausts and the decibel readers and whatnot, or decibel levels. And the state has standards that are set based upon vehicle type and classification in terms of how, how many decibels it can emit. And we're not looking at somehow creating a higher standard at all, just, just following the standard that's already set. But, you know, to the point that I'm trying to make with respect to the piece of legislation in front of you right now, you know, it is not the city's objective, you know, to go after people that are, you know, enjoying, you know, a convertible, top-down type day, and they're playing the radio, you know, or they're on a motorcycle and they have the stereo, you know, kicked up. You know, it's, 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 it's the, how do I want to say? It's the folks that, that then aren't courteous when they're stopped for any given period of time, whether they're pulled over in a parking spot or they're- they're stopped at a traffic light, and they're doing something to a degree that actually generates a complaint that comes in. Somebody, somebody picks up the phone and calls, calls the police because it is so distracting or it's, it's so noisy that it's, it's causing a complaint. That's, that's where we're at today, where we, we don't have the ability to actually, you know, have a conversation with somebody other than just having that conversation. And if compliance isn't, you know, isn't, isn't achieved, if the person isn't courteous or respectful when an officer does kindly ask them to just turn it down, that's when this proposed code would allow the officer then to write, to write a ticket.
But I don't know how this is enforceable. We have the person you pull over, you give them a ticket, he says it wasn't that loud. The officer says it was. What, what do you have for proof, Adam? How are you going to win that? I mean, but it's not, he's already turned the radio down by the time the police officer comes up to him. I, I don't know how you're going to be able to prove anything. It's your word against the person with a loud car. And I've got a guy in a black pickup that goes down every couple of days, cranked up full blast. But I, why would I call the police on it?
So I'll start off with the, the first reason for the amendment change is because we actually lost a citation under this ordinance because it wasn't specific to coming from a car. So that's the reason for the, the change. The, the second thing is, you know, using officer discretion issuing the citation, when you do go before the magistrate, you have to articulate the reasons why, right?
Right.
So, "The, the music was so loud that it was causing my rearview mirror to vibrate, and I couldn't, I couldn't see back every time it thumped," right? Or, or we received complaints from business owners. And you can articulate the reason, you know, that you believe that the, the music was too loud. With the decibel readers, we'll also be able to give a decibel reading in a citation, print out a ticket, here you go. Hey, and by the way, it exceeded the exhaust, the seven oh seven C, which is the threshold for exhaust. So that's how it would be enforceable. That's how you would have to articulate it before the magistrate.
I would like to see, from someone like myself that lived next door to someone that built his own stock car for two years, with no ma, no muffler, no manifold, and you call the police repeatedly, there's nothing we can do until eleven o'clock. Has that been changed?
So in the ordinance, as it sits, between eleven and seven.
Nothing, I was told by a variety of people who worked, answered the phone, we don't do anything until eleven at night for noise.
They were wrong.
Well, not back then.
I, I can say, reading the state statute for this, it's any time during the day that it exceeds the decibel.
It wasn't followed here for years, and you can.
Well, that's a different issue.
We, I believe you.
Yeah.
But. The, the other thing that I got thinking about as I got the calls in on this one, was the fact is, as wonderful as our city police are, and they are wonderful, the normal person in a convertible pulling up to the light with a loud stereo and moving on, there's no way there's going to be time to have a response to that or to deal with that. And that's not what I think the problem is. The issues that I got from the calls I got were people talking about the cars that go up and down Mitchell Street constantly, trying to cause a disturbance. And I'm aware of a situation in town, a person called me about it, that their neighbor has very different political views than they do. So they would go out, turn on their car, it was a convertible, crank the stereo on their favorite shock jockey, and blare their radio show. And the position is, there's no enforcement of that. It's not coming out of the house, it's, it's out of a motor vehicle. And unfortunately, again, we're dealing with complaints, dealing with people that don't know where the line of common decency is, where we have to have something in place that says, no, this isn't right. And, and I think it's a minor change. Again, I've said it and I voted for one, tabled one. I don't like repeating laws that we already have the ability to enforce. This is something I see that there was a hole in, that people were taking advantage of that hole, and unfortunately, being unneighborly and uncommunity minded. And I don't think it's going to affect ninety-eight percent of our population. But when the police get called because your neighbor is unreasonable and is purposely trying to yank your chain, the police can say, shut it down.
One thing to add as well, the, the timing, Councilman Brelabas, is sort of a window of, of extra emphasis. But certainly, if council wants to strike that entirely out, you can. You know, it would still be enforceable twenty-four hours a day. If it's, you know, we don't want to add any confusion.
Why not strike it?
It should be, yeah, it should be struck. If you just said it was enforceable twenty-four hours a day.
And if it was misunderstood by law enforcement in the past, so let's.
As, as.
Mike?
Making an assumption that the council looks at moving this one forward, you would approve it as amended, striking that, that time provision.
Mike has something to say in that regard.
There's actually two components to this. One is under sixteen dash one forty-four, excessive noise declared a nuisance. And the gentleman who spoke is correct, it should be sixteen forty-five, subparagraph nine. But if you look at the way they're structured, it's kind of interesting. Because section sixteen, one forty-four declares a nuisance, excessive noise. And that is defined as all louder unusual noises or sounds and annoying vibrations which offend the peace and quiet of persons of ordinary sensibilities are hereby declared to be public nuisances. Now, there's some legal problems with that, only because there have been some courts that have overturned similar language, particularly like in Grand Rapids. But assuming for instance, as we should with all ordinances that are, they are presumed lawful, right, this section is declared to be a civil infraction. The one we're talking about, sixteen, one forty-five, subparagraph nine, by that section is a misdemeanor. Okay, so one is a civil infraction under one forty-four, the other under one forty-five, subparagraph nine, is a misdemeanor. And so I'm not sure whether that changes your perspective on it. But sixteen, one forty-four has no time limit whatsoever. And then the paragraph nine of one forty-five talks about particularly during the hours between eleven P M and seven A M. So it does not prohibit you from enforcing it, but it focuses on hours eleven P M to seven A M.
And that seems to have been a problem.
I am not the only one in this town that was told, no noise will be taken care of until eleven P M. It was pretty common with people that I've talked to, that that was standard procedure for the police at that time. Nothing would be answered until after eleven P M.
Yeah, that's.
And this is, this is ten years, fifteen years ago?
Yeah, and, and probably not uncommon, even not uncommon today, only because ambient noise before eleven is generally much higher. And so people don't even notice sounds that you would notice during, say, the middle of the night. But I just wanted to point that out, that one is a misdemeanor, the other one is a civil infraction.
And the misdemeanor is the one that states the hours, or vice versa?
The misdemeanor is the one that focuses on those particular hours, that's right. And the one that we're proposing to amend this evening.
I just wanted to reframe the debate a little bit, because I think there was some confusion as we got started. But can we put the ordinance back up there again? Because this is kind of like the last one, where we're changing just a small part of it. And as you said, Marcus, this is a, a classic noise ordinance that has been in the books for a long time. It references phonographs. It used to say the playing of any radio, television set phonograph, or any musical instrument in such a manner or with such a volume, particularly between the hours of eleven P M and seven A M. Or any place so as to annoy or disturb the quiet. That was the described infraction. And now it just includes, included but not limited to from a motor vehicle, which is the radio in the car now applies, as you said, Adam, we wrote a citation and weren't able to enforce it because the noise complaint came from a vehicle instead of a car. And this is, this is what we use for house parties? This is what we use? What would we, what have we used this ordinance for?
We would use it for loud house parties, yes.
Okay. And I, I, you know, I don't, I don't see that it's that big of a deal. I prefer it with eleven P M to seven A M. I think that that's, you know, people are allowed to do what they're allowed to do. I, I like that we have a, what seems like a common sense effort to enforce this between eleven P M and seven A M, and less important at other times. So I, you know, I like that, and I don't have any problem with them.
And you, you need to have a stock car move next door to you.
Yeah.
You'll change your mind.
But, but I think the stock car could be absolutely enforced before eleven P M. It could be twenty-four hours a day. I, I understand you're saying they, I, I understand you're saying they didn't, this law allows it to be.
And I, I have one more comment, too, because it does say, like you said, or at any time. Or, yeah, or at any time right here. And it is, to how it becomes enforced, I mean, when you're calling because your neighbors are having a house party, we're not going out there with decibel meters. It's enforced because it annoys and disturbs the quiet. Like you said, we have, you know, issues with that, but we, we write people citations that stand up for house parties, and we're not going out there with decibel meters.
Right.
So.
The stock car one, and I know I want to maybe confuse things, but that would actually go under the exhibition driving ordinance, when you're talking about the.
No, not if it's in the driveway. Building.
Oh, not if it's in the driveway? Oh, okay. I was, because it's not music.
It'd be noise.
Okay. All right. Well, my fault.
All right, this has, this does report to just music and that sort of thing. Good. So if my brother comes who talks really, really loud, we're good. I'm joking. I'm sorry. I just.
Okay. Would someone like to entertain a motion?
So you like leaving the eleven to seven?
It says particularly.
Particularly, but it says or at any time. And I'm hoping that it would be enforced at any time if someone called with a complaint. So.
Section sixteen dash one forty-five?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, that has to change. One forty-five, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to amend section sixteen dash one forty-five of the city code regarding motor vehicle noise. Is that correct?
Support.
Councilmember Allenboss?
No.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion, Keith. Okay. And then finally, we'll open public comment regarding the hearing, city code regarding marijuana odor mitigation.
Sorry.
I moved the phone in it.
Say you'd like one.
Yeah. Call a friend?
It is this way.
I'd just like to add that.
Can you state your name again?
Mary Ann Spurgeon.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. There are places in Cadillac in the city limits where houses are very close and the neighborhoods are very tight. I'm concerned that, like, in one place I know where the people across the street are growing, the people behind it smoke it heavily. And there are children. I'm just concerned as to wonder what this is doing to them, constantly being exposed to this odor and the smoke and the residue from that. So I'm, you know, in favor of, of trying to control that to some extent.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment. And you'll have to come up to the podium.
This is Joe Greer again. Technically, for a person to be able to smell pot from someone else, it only has to be a couple of parts per million. And you can be sometimes a half mile away from Four Winds, and you can smell Four Winds as well as the Foundry. So just because you can smell and discern the odor doesn't necessarily mean that it's hurting you or it's a problem. My concern is how much this is going to complicate law enforcement officers, how much it's going to cost, and how much time it's going to take, as well as extra overhead and burden for the city of Cadillac. But this is something that we have to deal with now, now that people can smoke pot.
Hi, Joe Kennard again. I'm not going to give you my views because the state of Michigan has voted and decided that we were going to legalize marijuana in Michigan. I do not know how as a city, we have, we were part of voting that in, and we have allowed people to move in their businesses here, and then to turn around and cite them for what they are growing legally or producing legally here. I just don't know how as a city we could talk out both sides of our mouths. So, thank you.
Randy? Yeah, I oppose this ordinance. Again, we're tweaking ordinances, making new ordinances and amending them. Everybody's smoking marijuana. A lot of people are neighbors. I'm not complaining. You can smell it coming down. My wife walks into any store and goes, oh, my goodness, you know, she's a non-smoker, and boy, she can just smell her anywhere. So, but I'll apply for the job to do the marijuana odor detector. But, and again, you know, the really unique thing is, we can walk around town, buy special glasses of alcohol, and walk around all through the city drinking alcohol with a special glass. Now, what's the worst of the two evils, you know? We buy glasses of alcohol, walk around town, stop at the next one. And again, our children see us drinking. There's alcoholics on the streets, sitting down in the city park. You're sitting there drinking alcohol, you know? I oppose this ordinance. And the city council should do the same.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to council discussion.
Mayor?
Yes.
Couple of points for clarification. The city council, when you adopted your ordinances regarding marijuana retail facilities and marijuana industrial type facilities, that included a provision for odor mitigation. And so all of those types, the commercial and industrial and the, the business aspect of marijuana is, already has a odor mitigation code or ordinance in place. So this, this pending code tonight is, is not at all regarding those types of uses. It's regarding marijuana odors that are emanating from, you know, personal dwellings or other spaces, not the commercial or industrial space. Also wanted to mention, too, you know, regarding the potential influx of, of work to the police department, that it's, you know, I think it's important to say, and certainly our public safety director will correct me as, as I may stumble here. But, you know, if, if a call comes in to the centralized dispatching facility, which is operated by the county, because someone is in need of assistance or is trying to lodge a complaint against somebody else for something else, you know, even if it is something that we can't do anything about, we still get dispatched out. Now, sometimes the police department might handle it through a phone call to the complaining party. And other times, they may actually arrive on the scene and try to talk people sort of through what the issue is. But in terms of, you know, the time and the resources that are involved, we are still going to be having to engage with people as they may make calls to us regarding this issue, as they, as we may have to do with other issues as well. So this, this pending ordinance now gives our police department actually the framework in which to try to, to help people work through it. And what I mean by that is the ordinance itself lists different odor mitigation measures that people could look at employing to try to dissipate those odors. We did receive a complaint whereby in a mixed-use type building, one structure had residential up top, the next. one structure had residential up top, the next building next to it that shares a common wall has a business in it, and the business was complaining that the marijuana odors were emanating through from the residential area into the business area. And, you know, there was honestly really nothing that we could do about it other than kindly ask people to try to, you know, blow the smoke out or keep, you know. As you'll see in the ordinance, there's some other ideas about filtration and ventilation, and even, you know, using diffusers to help with the odors. And so, you know, this is, you know, like a lot that you've been dealing with this evening, you know, something that we're proposing because we believe that this might be something that we might have some more issues with down the road. We don't know. We just don't know. But right now, we don't really have the tools to handle it, and so this would give us that, so.
And we need to buy the, what is it, olfactory devices? Is that what we plan on using for detection?
Well, so the code gives options for detection, right? So, you know, having a device that could actually measure the amount in the air is, I think, what you might be referring to.
Seven-to-one dilution threshold.
Or complaints that get lodged as well, so you don't have to have the scientific device.
I'd be interested to see what exactly a seven-to-one dilution threshold actually smells like, because there's some nasty smelling marijuana. It's very strong. And what's gonna trigger that dilution ratio? Is it gonna be two plants? Somebody sitting in their house with a window open? Some people get real cranky. I mean, I don't. I live in a pretty good neighborhood. There is, I've never smelled it. Well, down the block. But I think we do need something on the books.
Yeah. So to Joe Kennard's comment, the businesses are regulated on their own, so this wouldn't affect it. And in relation to, in my understanding, a part of the problem we have with the complaints that we had is it was actually individuals that were producing their own marijuana. They weren't necessarily smoking at the time, but when they were drying it out in their oven, we had an excessive amount. And I don't have a problem saying that if people are growing their own and processing it, that they should be under regulation and respectful to their neighbors. The section that I'm not okay with is section B that adds use. And the way I thought about it was, if I have a neighbor, if I have an apartment, and we both have a balcony, and I like to smoke cigars, and he smokes marijuana, and my cigar smoke offends him, and his marijuana smoke offends me, it seems pretty darn discriminatory to say that my smoking a cigar, which is legal or a cigarette, is okay, but smoking the joint on the next balcony, which is also legal, isn't okay. And I really think there's a discrimination in that, and would very much support section A, but would strike section B as it relates to you.
I would agree, because there are some people that have a very low tolerance to the smell of marijuana, any at all. And if they know that all it takes is three times, they'll take advantage of that. I would agree with that. But we do need something on the books. We should have something there.
I guess I'm hesitant to support this one for the same reasons Steve said about section B. And I don't really support section A in private residences. I'd support, it would have to be, and I don't know if it even could, be limited to a multi-unit type place for me to support this.
I would assume council could amend it to look like anything you want.
Perhaps until somebody grows their twelve plants and, right next to your house, and it comes harvest time, and all of a sudden, oh, wait a minute, I don't like the smell of that.
I mean, I get calls about, I mean, the lady down the street is calling because the campfire smoke blows right through her window, and that agitates her allergies, you know. She calls me about that, but there's nothing we can do as long as it's in the container that it needs to be in. You know, the rental I own where my brother lives is by the factory. Again, that, like, we can't, like, we had a conversation about the industrial marijuana and the industrial plant, like, you know, it's not harmful to you. Yes, it's annoying, but I guess that's, you know, that's what I think about it.
And I guess this is just one that I'd like to talk more about, because I could, you know, like I said, I just don't like it as it is. And I don't even know if it's possible to restrict a multi-unit. But when it comes to something, when it comes to something like smoking, is smoking allowed in those types of apartments? Like, how are the, you said we were having a problem with the growing in above one of our stores. Like, when they're smoking inside, is that smoking allowed in that building? Is the landlord just doesn't care? Like, is that a state law that they're not allowed to smoke inside of a commercial building? No.
No.
And like any store, that's the store policy.
But no, this would be a residence above the store.
Yes.
Commercial structures you cannot smoke in.
But a multi-use structure is not a commercial.
Well, a residential structure you could certainly.
And the special use ones?
Because this was residential above, as I understood. So you can still smoke in your own house, right, as long as the landlord permits it.
As long as landlord permits it, okay.
Yeah, so if there's no prohibition, and you can prohibit the use of marijuana still in rentals as well, if you choose to do so as a landlord. But otherwise, it's lawful.
It's also, I understand the difference between growing and smoking, although the smoking is more harmful because it's side smoke, you know, and if you're nearby. But when you're growing, it's constant, and.
My suggestion, council member, and I apologize to interrupt you, but if council's looking at potentially limiting this to be only applicable to multifamily-type structures, I would suggest perhaps we table this to give our city attorney a chance to review whether or not we can do that before we move it forward, or not move it forward, but that would be something we would need to look at and do some research on.
Well, and I also would go back to, you know, I read in our council packet that fifty percent of the single-family homes in Cadillac are rentals. And so I think it's important, from odor mitigation standpoint, that people understand, you know, that they have to have a filtration system. I mean, I would think that the landlords would appreciate that not being, you know, seeped into the walls of their home, if you will. So I just thought I'd throw that out there. You know, this whole marijuana discussion, ever since the voters in the city of Cadillac voted to legalize marijuana. So, you know, and I reminded somebody of that today when I was talking to him, because he kept saying "you" as in the city council, and I asked him if he remembered when it was on the ballot for the people of the city of Cadillac to approve or not. And he said he did remember that. So, you know, we are learning as we go, and we knew that things that we put in place in the beginning, that we were gonna have to probably tweak some things along the way, and we were gonna have to discuss, you know, like, this is an outcome of the fact that, you know, we allowed, you know, although when we brought it, you know, we did it in as conservatively as we could, but we tried to do it with a very thoughtful approach, and we'll continue to do that. And so if we're not ready to do anything with this tonight, because to me it sounds like we're not, we need some clarification from Mike, or if we do plan to go forward. I think that this discussion has been good. Did you find something, Mike?
No.
Okay.
No, we'll have to look. I mean, there needs to be a rational basis. I could think of close proximity, shared walls, those things, but I want to make sure that there is a rational basis for treating it differently than other premises in the city.
Because there are some homes that are quite close together.
What I'll do is I'll go ahead and make a motion. If it doesn't go, that's fine. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to add section twenty-two, one thirty-nine to the city code regarding marijuana ordinance mitigation, with the revision that section B removes any reference to personal use. And I believe that section B one would have to be amended to any person who cultivates or uses, cultivates and gets rid of or uses, so it would cultivates marijuana for any purpose, so that it's strictly dealing with the growing and processing of marijuana.
I'd second that.
Councilmember Ingles?
No.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
No, I'd like more time to.
Allenbach?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Yeah, we need something.
Just as a quick reminder, as you've all done tonight several times, you can always amend.
Right, right.
And it's not a bad thing to do. Adapting is okay.
So that we could address.
Yes.
I'm comfortable with how it turned out.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I think that takes us to the city manager's report this evening.
Do I have one to do? I'm teasing. Just a moment here to get get my computer caught up. Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The recommendation this evening under the first item is with respect to essentially a renewal of the intergovernmental agreement we have with Wexford County for assessing services. And just a very quick refresher, I know it's been a long afternoon for everybody, but this was something that we were actually recognized by the state of Michigan for having in place as a part of intergovernmental collaboration in the state of Michigan, using the Director of Equalization Services, currently held by Joe Porterfield, also as our city assessor. The recommendation this evening would be to continue that relationship, and in doing so, we do need to request a waiver of competitive bidding within a motion to also approve the agreement. We're also looking at having the agreement adjusted by using the basis of CPI or two percent, whichever the lesser, so that it'll annually adjust by that margin, so.
I'll make a motion to waive competitive bidding regarding assessing services.
I'll second that.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allenbach?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Wexford County for assessing services as presented.
And I'll support that.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Allenbach?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, Marcus.
Thank you. Our current fiscal year twenty-two budget under our water and sewer fund has a project, as well as an appropriation for the construction of a pole barn that'll replace the current storage pole barn building that we've had for over fifty years. We did receive bids competitively, and the recommendation this evening is to go with the lowest bidder, Orshol Construction, in the amount of forty thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. And again, funds are available in our current year budget under the water and sewer fund.
I'll make a motion to award the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two pole barn project to Orshol Construction in the amount of forty thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
I'll support.
Councilmember Allenbach?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving right along, this next one is also out of the utilities department. The current fiscal year twenty-two budget includes an appropriation for well cleaning and also any necessary related repairs. We did solicit competitively for bids. We did receive one back from Raymer out of Marne, Michigan, in the amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars. Our recommendation this evening is to award that to Raymer, and also to authorize expenditure of up to an additional five thousand dollars for any necessary repairs that we may find as a part of the cleaning process. Funds are available in our water and sewer fund accordingly.
Okay, I'll make a motion to award the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two water well cleaning project to Raymer in the amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars, and to authorize the utilities department to spend up to five thousand for any necessary repairs.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allenbach?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This next item might seem vaguely familiar. It was introduced as a part of your, one of your budgeting work sessions that you had earlier this afternoon regarding a purchase of a bucket truck. As you'll see in the council communication, the recommendation this evening is actually to reject bids. Communication details the reasons why, some of which include the absolute exorbitant wait time before getting the vehicle. We are looking at a truck that we found that is down south. Owen, our finance director, can just clarify a little bit, but the recommendation this evening would be to reject the bids and to go with the recommendation, as Owen is about to communicate.
Yeah, so the, it's a little bit unique to buy a used vehicle, and the nature of the used vehicle market is they won't necessarily just hang on to it for you for a period of time. And since we had to come to council for approval, when we wrote the communication, we didn't know exactly what would be available, but we did find a unit from Altech, which was one of the bidders and is the same model of a larger bucket truck that we have. The unit is in Birmingham, Alabama, and the unit was listed for ninety-nine-nine, ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. And in talking with them and negotiating a little bit, they dropped three thousand dollars from the price and will reimburse for the cost of the plane ticket to travel to Birmingham to drive it back. So the advantage of that is it saves a couple thousand dollars in about twenty-five hundred in delivery costs, and it allows our DBW operations manager to put eyes on the vehicle before we just buy it sight unseen. So, I mean, he's very good with that kind of analysis and inspection, so very comfortable in allowing to do that. So because of our travel policy, you do have to approve the out-of-state travel, but that will be, there may be some hotel costs, depending on the timing of the flight, and then obviously fuel on the way back, but they will reimburse for the cost of the plane ticket. So very happy with the vehicle we were able to find, and it'll save us about forty thousand dollars.
You know we could send him by Amtrak a lot cheaper.
Actually, not that much cheaper.
Isn't it?
No, I've been looking at that.
Okay. They'll only reimburse the plane, sorry.
How long is the ladder reach?
It's, I think it's a forty-eight, forty-eight feet.
Forty-eight, okay.
Yep, yep. And it's, you know, the size relative to the size of the forestry bucket truck, it accesses a lot more areas, so we.
Like you said, the waiting list, if you wanted to buy a new one?
Yeah, one company was twenty-twenty-five. The next company was anywhere from three sixty-five to four hundred and seventy-five days estimated, and the other company didn't provide, didn't provide a delivery date and didn't bid for the actual cabin chassis.
And the old one is ready for the scrapping.
Very much so, yes. I couldn't even tell you. It was, it was pretty used when we got it, and we've used it probably for close to a decade.
What does the city do with that?
Yeah, lots of things. What's that?
Is there an auction that the city still does?
There is. It's an online auction, yep.
Okay, all right. Yeah, it's the best deal we can find. I agree with you.
It is, it is at the time, yep. And again, before we hand over the check, we'll have.
Ken does a good job. He knows his vehicles.
Do we need for a motion, Owen, to put not to exceed? I saw it says it will not be more than a hundred thousand.
I have a firm quote for the ninety-six-nine, plus there'll probably be some transfer fees, so you can, you can do that however you're comfortable with.
I just didn't know if we needed to.
I don't, I don't need you to do that, but since we actually have a vehicle, it's available right now, and as long as we commit to it tomorrow, they won't, they won't sell it out from underneath us, so.
Sounds good. I would make a motion to reject the bids for a new bucket truck and award the purchase of a used bucket truck per final recommendation based on. per final recommendation based on avail- availability of pre-owned models. Also approve out-of-state travel for DPW operations manager Kenneth Payne to inspect the unit, complete the purchase and drive it back to Cadillac.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, mayor and members of the city council, and it seems a little funny, but, uh, it's that time of year again where we need to look at the purchase of additional road salt for next winter, even though we may not necessarily be completely out of the woods of the current winter season. Uh, I think today might be the first day of spring or?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, okay. So technically we might be, but we, there still might be another storm, uh, our way. But nevertheless, we've been participating in the My Deal program for a number of years, uh, and it is our request again to also use My Deal, which is the state's competitive bidding process to, uh, obtain our salt.
Owen, did we use up all our salt? How much do we have?
Yeah, so we had some left over from the prior year. So, um, this year we only purchased thirteen hundred tons and we're getting right down to the end of it, especially after that, uh, that ice storm.
How much?
I can't tell you exactly, I wish I'd have looked that up.
Is it?
Um, but I, I do know it was, you know, for a whole day, it was basically just dump and reload and dump and reload and dump and reload. So we're getting down to the end where we had a discussion the other day, like should we order a couple hundred more or, or have some, but I think we're gonna be okay. Um, but that was because we had, you know, enough left over from the prior year, but we're, we're kinda needing a full stop.
Has the price gone up on that?
What's that?
Has the price gone up?
The, the price is, has kinda maintained the last couple of years. Um, it, it went up pretty dramatically four or five years ago. Um, it was in the forties and fifties for a while and now it's in the seventies, so.
A ton, you mean?
Per ton, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city to participate in the My Deal competitive bidding process and approve the commitment to purchase up to two thousand tons of seasonal road salt through the resulting state of Michigan contract at the unit cost bid approved by the state of Michigan.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, tonight we do have in our packets the minutes from the October meeting of the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority. Um, at this time, we'll open the floor for our last public comment.
Okay, let's get, get her done. Uh, some gentlemen talked about stress in the city and that. And I'm not holding this against the police, Adam, or anybody, but up at the shooting range on a clear day, from this, uh, Franklin School to the hospital, throughout the whole town, all my friends that are PS, that's from Vietnam War, Afghan and Desert Storm that are out my house have to leave because it sounds like Russia and Ukraine fighting. It is, the echo is just completely through town. I've got it on tape and record. And then the second thing, Mr. Councilman Allen Bass, I was really surprised on, uh, the amendment ordinance number four. And, uh, next month's meetings will probably come to, uh, uh, now, let me see, make sure I got this. So now the council and the city manager, the department supervision will be going into closed session probably next month to give themselves raises and increases pretty soon, I'm not for sure. And the citizens of Cadillac Utility Bills and Sewer and Water will be going up and added up. Um, so no department had, for the city of Cadillac are irreplaceable. Some walk on water, I understand that. And the last thing is, is that we learned a lot about politics tonight. Mike, you'll like this one. This is politics at its best tonight. The word politics means poly, many people, tics, blood-sucking politicians. Thank you.
Okay.
That's politics for you.
Gary Van Houten again. I had, uh, no intention to do this, but I think the opportunity is, uh, is just too, uh, right. Uh, another noise issue that we have in the city of Cadillac is this airplane that flies around the city every day during the summer. It's starting up again right now. Every day in the, during the summer, this twin-engine aircraft with no muffler system, it doesn't seem to be any exhaust system at all on it. There are other twin-engine airplanes that I see go over all the time that don't make uh, half as much or a quarter as much noise as this one. And this one, uh, flies around constantly. If you're outside in the summer day, you will see this airplane fly around and it's, uh, the noise, it, he doesn't fly very high because I think, and what they told me at the airport when I called there, he's a training pilot. He comes from some other locale, not Cadillac. They don't really, they couldn't tell me where he comes from, but he provides a training service and then he flies constantly. He just does touchdown landings and, and keeps on going and makes these circles over the city of Cadillac. And he's at a very low altitude and so it's incredibly, uh, annoying, to say the least. And I called, I actually, uh, one day, this was, uh, and he's been doing this now for several years. I called one time to the, uh, Federal Aviation Association or whatever, FAA, I think it's called, and they said, and I, and I said, what, what can I do about a, a plane that's flying at a low altitude and constantly producing all of this noise? And they, what can you do about that? And they said, we can do absolutely nothing. It has to be, uh, come from the local municipality or, uh, governmental, uh, unit. It has to come from the local area, so I, I suspect we have no ordinance, uh, at all about that, but, uh, it just, it just seemed too opportune to not bring that up tonight. I think that something has to be done because, you know, I was hoping that after two or three or four years, I think now, that this has been going on, that the, it would stop and, but it doesn't. And I can, you know, I can identify that airplane from inside by the, the sound and certainly is, when I go outside, it's very identifiable. It's a light green airplane with a red, uh, tail fin. Twin-engine, extremely loud, so just take that under consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have a chopper, the CIP, please chopper.
Right, right.
Okay. Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to good of the order, if anyone has anything this evening.
I do tonight. Uh, I understand, and again, I got calls when I got back into town last week, uh, people's concerns about approving routes for snowmobiles into the business district of Cadillac. And the majority of my calls, uh, were of the concern that the proposed route went down the White Pine Trail and that their sole objection, uh, was the fact that the proposed route to the south end of town was on the White Pine Trail. When I was able to show them the map that it does not go down the White Pine Trail, every one of the calls said, well, then our objection's withdrawn. We just didn't wanna see the White Pine Trail, uh, get affected. Uh, the other question that I had, uh, from a person that called all of us, uh, on many of the ordinances tonight was concern of the noise of snowmobiles, uh, as they're getting into the different businesses. For example, Willam Market. And interestingly, his objection went down when I pointed out a snowmobile has to go twenty-five on a road if that's the designated route and at that rate, uh, they're not going to be loud. Um, I think it's a very important economic decision for us to take action on. My understanding is that businesses are putting together a packet, uh, to be available to council for April, so I'd like to see if we can get this issue back, uh, on, uh, the, uh, agenda for April and have people discuss it, make sure we have time, uh, for the next couple of weeks. And, uh, to John Wallace, your maps are great, but as you know, they're, they're tough. If, if we can somehow show that southern route that shows it's not on the White Pine Trail, I think that makes a huge. You can tell when you really zoom in, but you can't tell from the, the picture we have. That's all I have?
You or me? No, you're gonna give it to me? Well, I got up this morning, I was having my morning coffee and all of a sudden my wife was reading the Cadillac news. Or if you're old like me, it's the Cadillac Evening News. And she exclaimed, my goodness, the city sold the, the marketplace. I said, no, what do you, what do you, you can't do that. That doesn't sound right. So, but as you're reading it, Chris, after acting as market manager for several years, Mary Galvane, who by the way, has done a wonderful job down there, and I think we all agree on that, thank her very much, has purchased the Cadillac Farmers Market in a partnership with her forest and farm instructor, Emily Rupert, and her mother, Sherry Allen Bass, who I don't know. Um, can somebody clarify that? How much did we get out of it? Come on, you're on the board, talk to me, talk to the taxpayers. We did not sell the market.
We did not sell the market.
Obviously not. What did we sell? Did we sell anything? Okay.
This might be a good time for you to explain and elaborate on the way the market works, the LLC and everything we've been.
Uh, quite simply, the city of Cadillac has the asset. So the market at Cadillac Commons, the Rotary Performing Arts Pavilion at Cadillac Commons, the city park, the plaza, these are all owned by the city. These are all properties of the city. The trailhead project that we're working on would be another example of something. The, um, you know, uh, the, the various parks sitting around our community, Diggins Hill Tennis Courts, these are all city-owned assets. Uh, people, uh, organizations, uh, other entities are certainly allowed to use them. These are public facilities. Uh, they, some of them, we, we rent. Um, uh, the market at Cadillac Commons is one of those facilities that we rent and it has been the home for the last couple of years since the facility was built to the Cadillac Farmers Market LLC. Uh, it is my understanding that I learned tonight, uh, council member, through the newspaper article that you brought in, uh, that, um, uh, they're now going public in terms of, uh, ownership change. So the Cadillac Farmers Market LLC is a private business, is nothing to do with the city. Um, they simply use the space like you or I could use it for our own.
So we didn't, we didn't even, we didn't sell them the name?
Nope, we have no involvement with it at all.
And the name is the Market at Cadillac Commons.
Right.
It's not Cadillac Farmers Market.
Right.
Boy, somebody at the news is in big trouble, I can tell you. He's looking real nervous over there. Come on. All right, well, if you didn't, didn't get anything out of it, I'm not gonna have you sell anything. All right, thank you. That's it. Anybody else?
Oh, we went, um, some of us attended the Michigan Municipal League, um, Capitol Con.
Convention.
Conference, convention, Capitol Convention. Um, and there was a lot of very interesting, um, speakers and information that was imparted to us. Um, one of the things that really struck me is an organization called Braver Angels. And it is a group that started several years ago, the purpose being to get people with, on different, um, different arms of political agendas, people with different political views to come together and talk and find out what we have in common. And they use similar techniques as, um, like family counseling. And it was just, it was so fascinating because I know there's so much discord and, you know, it's us against them and this guy wears this hat and this guy wears that bumper sticker and this guy, and I can't talk to him and all that kind of stuff. And to see, see that there's an actual organization that is working with communities to help neighbors talk to one another. And I would just like to say that here, I know there's a lot of, lot of discord, but there's also an opportunity for us to talk to each other. And I had that opportunity this afternoon with a phone call from someone in the city who actually made the point to say, we're on opposite spectrums of political, of, of politics, but we were able to have a good conversation and understand each other and, um, I think we can all do that. And all it takes is reaching out and finding what we do have in common, so I'd like to see more of that.
Okay. Marcus, did you have anything further?
I'm good.
She says she's gone.
No, I, I, just, just a hearty thank you for all your time today.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn then.
Sorry.